Okay. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners is okay with this until we can get the action resolution taken.
You can, you guys have a resolution, you guys can go ahead and approve the resolution this time.
We'll approve the resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-four.
Motion by Travis and a second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous.
So, what we'll do, Mr. Chairman, if we can just trail number three and go to item C.
Trail number three?
So, we're just leaving this rule.
Yeah, we're skipping it.
Okay. Okay, so now we'll go to page three. It's at the nine twenty public hearing. Item C one is a public hearing, discussion only. The White Pine County Board of Commissioners will take public comment regarding its intent to lease the following described county real property to Arinautico Radio Incorporated for the duration of three years or no less than two hundred, for no less than two hundred and sixteen dollars, seventy-nine cents per month pursuant to NRS two four four point two eight three three as described in the material in front of us. Is that right?
Correct. So, it's public time.
This is a public hearing again on Arinautico Radio Incorporated. So, any comment on the radio, on the, on the phone? Hearing none, any comment in the audience? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what these people are doing, if they're offering the service. That needs to be explained a little bit. Other than that, I really don't have a problem with the rental. But I'd like to know why they're gonna be in that building and what they are attempting to do in this community.
Travis?
Yeah, they're, they're already, they're operating their equipment. As far as exactly what the equipment does, I'm not sure. Has to do with planes coming in and radio this and radio that and all that airport lingo is over my head, but.
Yeah, this company's been there for almost twenty years. They, they provide the equipment used to communicate with air traffic. And they pay us with this base because they, they make money some other way.
Okay, that answers that. Anybody else on the phone or in the audience want an explanation more? That explains that. We're gonna go on to item two. Can I do that now, Mike?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna go on to item two. It's discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash seven five, a resolution of the White Pine County Board of County Commissioners declaring that it is in the best interest of the county to lease certain county property, real property located at Yellen Field pursuant to NRS two four four point two eight three three. Anybody got any comments or anything they wanna add to that before I ask for a motion to approve this resolution? Anyone? I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash seven five.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Item three, same page, page three, item three. Discussion for possible action, the approval of a lease agreement between county and Arinautico Radio Incorporated, A R I N C, the following county-owned real property for a three-year term for a minimum of at least two hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-nine cents per month pursuant to NRS two four four point two eight three three, and the rest is included in our backup. Is that what came out?
Yes, it, it is sort of in your backup. What you have in your backup is the old lease. The only thing that's been changing on the new lease is going from two hundred to two, whatever it is, sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, and then another five years starting to end up. Brian is, what do you call it?
Lightning?
He's, this is an old copy we have. He's putting it into the new format so that we have a digital copy of it, and he just hasn't, he hasn't finished that before today's meeting.
So, is it three weeks or five weeks?
It should be three plus two.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what we'll do is, once that is completed, we'll have to tell the chairman to sign it. So, we're seeking a motion to approve where the three plus two terms in the new dollar amount, the approval resolution contingent upon the, I mean, I think we just provided those two official terms, and I think the chairman can sign it.
Okay.
All right, motion to approve the lease agreement?
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Pass unanimous.
Okay, when I get that other lease, I will be back. Did Mackenzie introduce herself to y'all again?
Yeah.
This is Mackenzie Hilton. This is Mackenzie Hilton. She's a, she's a, she's our star criminal deputy, but I'm trying to cross train her for this in case I get hit by a trucker.
Okay. And welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. We have a nine thirty update on the senior center. This is number one, this is page four. As a discussion update on the White Pine Senior Center remodel progress, Burton, help assess our Catherine Backer, Preacher, Bill Colderwood, Public Works, and Lori Romero, Senior Program Administrator.
And Tim Norton.
And Tim Norton.
Thank you for having me up here today, kind of representing the group, I guess, unless Phil wants to. Oh, there's Catherine, too. Just wanted to give you an update. It's been kind of a tough process, but we've gotten a lot of good things done with this grant. We've got the new HVAC system in the senior center. We moved all the plumbing that was in the dirt under the ground. It's all overhead for the water supply. Got the backflow preventer on, which we needed to do anyways. Updated the front entry there and new handicap access into the front door. LED lighting throughout, so one of our goals during this process was to reduce the operational costs going forward, not only make this, you know, good for the next twenty, thirty years, but also reduce what it cost to run the facility. We got the parking lot paved, that's probably the most noticeable thing for everybody, and looks really good. We did some improvements in the cleaning room, so they had to lift the mop bucket up before into a big drain. Now it's a floor drain, so it's backed and all that are a lot better. The flooring's really good in there. I think Richard's been in there. I don't know if any of you guys else have been in there, how did I recommend going in? There's one thing we have not been able to get done, and it's gonna be improved, and we just ran out of time, so we got an extension from the Pennington Foundation so we can get that done next spring, early summer, soon as the weather is conducive for that. But to say it was easy would be lying. This was supposed to be an eight-week process, and I think it turned into an eighteen-week process. So, I can't thank the people enough, Catherine, Bill, Lori, for all the time they put in, but especially Tim Norton. I mean, we would've been sunk without him. He did, and he and his staff for his crew just did amazing work, and I'm so appreciative, and we were very, very lucky to have him and have his people come in and help with it. I'm sure we'll be bringing some other stuff up regarding the senior center in the future, but for now, I just wanted to let you know where we're at. I guess the one fortunately is because of all this stuff going on, they haven't been able to have any personal meals, so it didn't affect that with some of the construction challenges, but it's gonna be really nice when they can get in there. Any questions on the senior center?
No, and thank you, guys. I have been in there, and I recommend that all of you take a look. The floors are beautiful, the, the lighting is much, much better, the parking lot, you can see it's visible from the street, but we really appreciate you and Catherine and your, Bill and the rest of you, I wanna name everybody, Tim Norton as well, because the senior center is a very vital part of this community. And from what I understand, they're, they're gonna try to start doing in-house meals tomorrow.
Oh, awesome.
And they're gonna have to be limited to the space only, so it's almost like taking, making a reservation. I don't know how long that's gonna be able to last, but they're gonna try to start tomorrow. They've got people calling in, and they're gonna extend their feeding times, but there's social distancing, there's a bunch of stuff going in there, but they've had a very successful run as far as working from the outside with the volunteers, and they're to be graduated or recognized as well. The senior center is, is as essential as anything. It's not one of our main essential things, but really, it takes care of a lot, a lot of people. And you guys making that heating system and making all this possible is gonna just make it, enhance their experience in the senior center. They got the pool table out, too, so now they can add some extra tables in there. They sold the pool table, so that's good news. But so, I, I suggest that they do that because nobody ever played, and they need the more spacing so you can put more people in, but starting tomorrow, they're gonna try to do in-house. How long this lasts, after Governor Sisalax's comments the other day about November twenty second, we will wait and see, but really, really appreciate it. The roof will be nice, but thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't say enough.
Yeah, we're, we're.
And please, all of you, take a little trip through there, you'll be really impressed, really, really.
Wonderful thing for our community. Replace that pool table with a couple of blackjack tables. I was up here, I was hoping I could take care of my business on page six, item B one.
B one, okay. Let's put a, no more comments on that apart from Burton. So, we're gonna go to page six, and it's item one, Burton. It's discussion for possible action, authorization for the assessor to utilize the Assessor Technology Fund to pay for unforeseen overtime for the week of December seventh to the amendment of twenty twenty. Okay.
So, I did this last year. We switched our computer systems, and, and last year was very, very challenging with our assessment cards. It's how it worked in the past, we'd have a sheet of card stock. If you guys remember getting our assessment cards, well, it'd be half a page, and so we'd be able to print it out, we just had to basically tear it apart, run it through a post-it machine with the old system. The new system, you get a sheet of paper, a whole sheet, and then we got folded, we got stuffed it, we got to tape it, and then we, it's a whole process, and then last year we had several other challenges on top of that. This year, I expect that it's gonna go much smoother, but we're doing, I wanna do it in-house again. My plan in the future is to contract this out. You know, it's one of those, we're always, I teased with Elizabeth that we're always in this catch twenty-two as far as the counties. All the counties above us do it this other way, all the counties below us do it a different way. We're in that, that, you know, perpetual middle, where if we had a few more thousand people, we could do it this other way easily, or if we had fewer people, you know. But it's a lot of manpower, and so we can, just so we can ensure that we can get this out in an efficient manner and make sure everything's correct. That's what I'm asking out of my technology plan, so it's not out of the general.
Any questions of Burton? If not, we'll find a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ian.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimous.
Thank you all.
Burton, do you mind our representative from the district attorney's office?
She looks familiar. I can't place my finger on it. Having a good one, you guys.
George is here, and I'm gonna move on ahead because we've got some timed items here ahead of us, so we're gonna go to page five, item A, and I have, it's, item one is under me, it's discussion, it's an update. It answers to concerns and questions raised by Mr. George Chatchis prior public meetings. So, I'm gonna answer these. I went out on my own, I went and tried to make answers to as many questions as you have. The first one I'll start off with is the one you brought up this morning about the, the Holiday Inn project. The Holiday Inn project was inspected, it was a, it was a, it was engineered by basin engineering. It was approved by the building inspector. I have a letter here from the NDOT, the State Department of Transportation, and it states that the construction of the new Holiday Inn Express required a new access location and the modification of Avenue D connection in the Nevada Department of Transportation. This work was completed through a permit process and connects to the state right away. The Avenue D connection required on the island to be installed prohibit the left turn movement to US ninety-three East Almond Street. This island was approved by NDOT staff and was installed as per the plan to enhance the safety at this location. The island has proven to be ineffective in prohibited movements, and as such, no changes or modifications will be made. That's the answer for that one.
Do I get a copy of that?
I can give you a copy. This is the one I got.
Did you ask, make note that there is no ADA access?
George, I'm answering, I'm answering your question. This is an update, this is not comment period. You gave me a list of things, I'm answering them. Some you might, some you won't. Okay.
I'll be back.
I, I'm sure you will, there's, there's a bunch more here. I'm trying to answer all of your, your questions. The parking lot by the convention center, this was built to be a parking lot for downtown. The center divider was taken out so the lot could be expanded for parking. The lot is mellowed with the street to allow for handicapped people to use the center. Walkway was taken out to poss, to provide access for traffic as well for all citizens on both the avenues on Lions and High. The ADA access, not one, not two, but three painted handicap zones. There is a four-way stop sign there. There is also a pedestrian lane there. On the, on the west side of that addition, there is handicapped access, wheelchair access, yes there is, it's painted yellow on both sides, so there, there, the lights that you discussed that are always out are all fixed, there was a filament that was out, the lights are all fixed and operational. They have a hood over the cop to allow for the lighting to, to go down to the surface, which is now used nationwide instead of the lights shining straight up, they shine straight down. So, the, that was engineered by day engineering. There are three handicap accesses, and that's, so that project, I went through it two, three times, more. I went in to talk to the convention center who is part of it, the Turn Rec Board. It was built by Rick Brothers to access, so it is all handicap accessible. There is no center divider anymore, they put landscaping in there to make it aesthetically possible. George, I'm just gonna read what I got for you. You want, you want answers? You want answers, I'll give them to you. The other complaint you continually have is about the building inspector. The building inspector is jointly operated by the city and the county. His office and evaluation of his duties will be handled the same as all other department heads. This is unique because it is jointly operated by both the city and the county. Much of his duties are also in conjunction with the newly formed RPC, the Regional Planning Commission, and by the way, he has returned from Eureka.
Is his wife making back in the vehicle also?
I, you asked if he'd come back, he's back. I, the other thing, you asked for the fees, you said they were charged, some are twenty-five, some are seventy-five. The fees for your home occupancy permit are fifty dollars. The initial fee to have it in there is a twenty-five dollar administration fee, making twenty-five plus fifty is seventy-five dollars. Each year thereafter, your home occupancy fee is fifty dollars. The, let's see, oh, you, you asked about getting the permit to put the roof on your, your property, or four ninety High Street? You continue to bring that up. Your name is not the name on the property, I explained this to you when I came into your office. If you were the owner and your name is on there, you can get a building permit because owner builder. If you had, if your name is not on that property, you need to have a licensed contractor to do the work. So, if your name can be added to the property, you can get a building permit issued to you.
You better check to see whose name is on there. Who told you that?
You told me that. And also, when I was at, your sister's name is on that property, Bessie Chatches.
Really?
Yes.
What property you talking about?
Four ninety High, yeah.
You're wrong.
Okay, well, I'm wrong.
You're wrong.
I'm wrong, so the address I had, so this is what I'm, okay.
I want, do you have the dollar amount?
No, I, I don't. I don't have it.
I wanna get started. Winner's here.
I just thought, you know, if your name's on the property, you can.
It is.
Okay, well, go check with the building department. The other one is your claim to damages on your property on High Street, the former Yen Grade School.
Mm-hmm. Continues.
Yeah, you can go and apply for that, there's, I don't know where it's at, but you, if you have insurance, your first line of defense on your property is your insurance. Well, it's your insurance, it's your property, so the counter's not there. Those are the questions that you had for me, and those are the answers that I've got for you today. Any other ones? George, you brought these up time after time, and I'm asking you if you don't have any. We welcome your comments, and you'll welcome any time to put them, but to be repetitious is, is not gonna happen. We've answered those questions. We've answered those questions, George, you heard what they were, and that's the way it is. So, anything else, you're welcome to bring it forward, but not continue, continue. So, if you don't like some of the stuff that I presented to you today, that's, that's the way it is.
Give it to me and I'll, I'll be back.
Yeah, it's all right here. Okay, so, we're not gonna hear any more of the interest to, to the Holiday Inn. Okay, so, that was that. Sorry, a little testy, but that's just the way it is.
Just so the passer there, on the assessor's website, four ninety High Street, it does sell George Chatchis trust as the owner.
Okay, so, you can, you can talk to the building inspector on that there.
I've talked to him. Give me a dollar amount so I can get started, I'm tired of going up there.
See what I can do for you, George. Okay, I'll do what I can for you now.
Give me a dollar amount, I'll give you the check, you give it to him. He's a first-class jerk, I'm getting tired of this.
Oh, name calling a public official, I love that.
That's okay. We've answered that, and any, any other questions on that will be taken up during, just like every other department head, just as I explained, we will have personnel hearings like we do with every other department head. No more. Okay, item two, on page six, because we already answered page one, which was, item one, which was Burton. So, item two is Nicole Baldwin, County Court. A is discussion for possible action, the approval of the canvas of the vote for the twenty twenty general election held in White Pine County. Nicole?
Thank you very much. I completed the canvas and attached it to the back of the material on Friday, so everyone should have been able to access it online through the agenda. It was a challenging election. On election day, we had some minor issues with some hard allegations, but we were able to resolve that internally within the first hour, and the rest of the day went fairly smooth. We had pretty good turnout. I don't remember if it was off the top of my head, but you have information in front of you. I know that there's been some things in the news about the voting system company that we use, Dominion Voting System, and they've put out a couple of press releases, and I printed those out, and I hand them out to you this morning in addition with a couple of press releases from the Secretary of State's Office that also address some things specifically that I've seen on Facebook. People look up their, the status of their vote online through the Secretary of State's website, and sometimes it doesn't show accurate information, and they have a press release explaining why that isn't going to be up to date until today when counties approve our canvas and our permanent history is pushed through. So, I can't speak to what's in the news and what is being spread as regards to rumors or alleged voter fraud, but I can tell you that here in White Pine County, everything came out as expected, and all of my pre-election testing and my post-election testing all came out as expected, and I'm asking for your approval of the canvas of vote.
You did a outstanding job in White Pine County, it's lucky to have you and your staff in, in the election locally, went, went as, as planned in White Pine County. I don't see any reason to question what you did. Now, out there, I talked to Senator Gokashea, we heard a public comment this morning, and you presented us with, with numbers and, and the facts of what we're, what we're here for. There's, there's different stuff out there, like you said. We are, we are presented with, with the numbers and how the election went out, and we are here to, to accept that as presented. Now, if there's, there's a caveat that comes, if there's something that happens with the state somewhere down the road, with, these are the numbers we're presented with. We can take this action here, as Pete was telling me, we can take this action because this is what's presented to us, this is what we have in front of us. We know who was voted on in White Pine County, these are the numbers that your office gave to us, and I one thousand percent agree with you. I'm sure that, I, I'm a hundred percent sure, your, your accuracy, your numbers are perfect. So, I'm gonna ask all the other commissioners that they want to make some input, but based on what we have in front of us and what we're about to hopefully accept are the numbers that were presented to us here. And does anybody have any questions with that?
I just have a comment. I don't think the mistrust in, in this system is, is based on what, what you came up with. I don't think that anyone in White Pine County feels that the mistrust is on the county level. I think what the concern is, is what happens with those numbers once they reach the state and get to a higher level. I think that's where the mistrust is. I don't think anyone has a question on, that, that we had a very equitable election process here. So, I, I just, I wanted to clarify that, because I, it's, it's not on this level. I just think people from everyone I've talked to don't trust it when it, when it gets up to a higher level.
But you don't have a problem with the canvassing and the vote?
This is what was, what was being presented to us by our clerk, and, and who's, I think 's done a fantastic job, and I have no problem with these numbers. My concern is what happens with these numbers when, once they, once they leave our control.
Anyone else?
I mean, yeah, to everybody's point, yeah, no, no issues here at the local level, but I think when we pass this, we just need to put that, you know, we have serious concerns with, you know, as far as, you know, the mail-in ballots and, you know, the voting machine, and, you know, it's, all has to be investigated, but I think, you know, there needs to be some accountability and some reforms going forward in this state, and, you know, our clerk did great with the, you know, how, what she had to do by what was passed by the legislature, but I think when we canvass this vote, we need to make sure that, there are, there are issues out there that, you know, county, that the big counties, that, you know, it's easy for fraud to appear in.
Well said. I agree.
Yeah, here, here.
Anyone else? Ian, you got anything?
Not, echoing everybody's things, I, for the record, if anybody happens to get their hands on this press release from, from Dominion, my opinion is it's, it's just a corporate CYA, especially when they use terms like rumors, viral claims and rumors. They are claims and rumors, they're, they're verified facts. They have had software glitches that change votes, it's a fact, it's not a, no, they, no, what's cool about that is it didn't happen everywhere, which means it probably didn't happen here if the people we trust didn't notice any material issues. So, so, yeah, we're, we're fine with that, but I just, you know, I chuckle at their thing, or thinking with a rumor, it's not a rumor, it's a fact, but.
The frightening thing with, with that company is, is it's funny how there is not issues in, in municipalities that have trustworthy people running the show.
Weird.
Isn't that funny? When you, when you get into jurisdictions where there's not trustworthy people running the show, then you come up with discrepancies, and that's, that's what's questionable about that system.
And you would think that they would, like any honest company, would say, oh my goodness, we're looking into this. Right? They don't have to admit that there's a problem, but they could be kind and say, hey, look, you know, this is obviously very serious, and we're gonna partner with, with authorities to fix this. So, anyway, neither here nor there, I don't have any issues. I think our, our hesitation was, we don't want to in any way hinder the president's ability to, to have a fair shake on this by, you know, approving something that would later screw his up, screw up his ability to challenge it or deal with it, and it sounds like that won't be the case, so I don't have any issues.
Okay, so, that being said, and really, I can't reiterate how much we appreciate you and your, your staff and all the poll workers and everybody that worked, everybody. So, based on the numbers presented to us today, I'm gonna look for a motion to approve the canvas of the vote for our numbers presented to us at this meeting.
So, a move to approval of canvas of vote as the numbers presented with the underlying statement that White Pine County does not endorse the changes to the election, election process that, that were made and that investigations need to go into these Dominion voting systems and elections going forward need to be fair and honest and much more transparent.
Okay, is that, that's a motion?
Yep.
You have a second?
Second.
A motion by Travis and a second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, it's ten o'clock, we can go back to our ten o'clock item. Okay, it's page four, it's our ten o'clock road commission meeting, and it's a discussion update regarding County Road eleven seventy-seven in Newark Valley. Bill Colderwood.
Good morning. Let me start with where we're at with the road department, and then we'll, then I'll go into where we're at with Western Oil. I believe you made up your whole there, we received authority to use, have a gravel pit north on eleven seventy-seven. That pit went out and looked at it last week, it's all state for five acres, this state. We had a dozer that is giving service today, and hopefully this afternoon or first thing tomorrow morning, it will be moving out to that gravel pit, and we will strip that material or that topsoil back. Um, not concerned with, um, however it works out with, um, the agreement with Western Oil, because regardless, we can use that oil, we can just turn it ahead and burn that gravel, we can just turn and, and head north and start using it, because that is, it is located on the county road. So we also, um, received, um, permission from the Forest Service to use the Mount Hamilton gravel pit. We've got all that's been signed, we're ready to go. There was six thousand cubic yards that were, that's currently piled up within that gravel pit. Um, when we met with Jose, um, because eleven seventy-seven, the gravel pit off eleven seventy-seven has stipulations that we, they, or we cannot use that gravel, um, for the access road from eleven seventy-seven to the oil.